...to the community over time. Right now, though, despite all that sort of the human energy of the street, it really is designed, physically designed today for automobiles first and foremost. Over 60, 65% of the street is devoted to automobile movement and traffic. Whereas the pedestrian realm is currently a bit challenged. The sidewalks are starting to show their age. They're mismatched in spots and there's a great deal of spalling and cracks in different places. Some of those cracks are caused by the street trees. The beloved street trees, which are a defining feature of the streetscape today, are actually causing quite a bit of infrastructure damage, both to the sidewalks, end of the pipes, and curbs as well. In fact, we've gone through a rigorous process over the last couple of years to really think about what can we do to preserve some of the existing street trees to the degree possible? What you see here is a matrix that shows sort of a decision-making paradigm for how to evaluate the existing trees to determine which ones we can intend for preservation. We've actually mapped all those out. You can see the green dots here that you see in various clusters are the ones that we do intend to preserve throughout this streetscape process, throughout construction, and into the next phase of Third Street's life. In addition to the sidewalks and the curb damage that I just mentioned, there are also significant drainage issues and stormwater issues, right? The street doesn't drain well today. It's, you know, beautiful summer day today, but we all know what winter looks like and there's a lot of sort of puddles and ponding on Third Street. A lot of work that needs to happen to the stormwater system to preserve it, as well as the rest of the utility infrastructure. Well, a lot of the presentation you're about to see is focused on how, what our vision for Third Street will be in terms of its aesthetic quality and its beauty and its comfort for community members. A great deal of the project, in fact, I would say the majority of the expense will actually be spent on the infrastructure, upgrading the sewer system, the pavement, the storm drains, the water system, the electrical. Much of this infrastructure, some of the infrastructure is over a century old at this point. It is showing its age and is in need of replacement. And that is really one of the driving forces behind the entire project. With that, let's launch into what does this preferred design look like? What is this design that our project advisory committee and our community members have over the last many years put together for you? Give you just one quick sort of overview before we get into the details of it. This is really the look and feel that we're trying to get to, something that is familiar in some ways and that it is a shady oasis, but has upgraded features throughout. The overall cross-section will look fairly similar to the cross-section that we have today. We are taking two feet out of each travel lane from the center and redistributing that away from automobiles and to the sidewalks and pedestrian areas to make a more comfortable pedestrian environment. But that's where the similarities sort of end, because what we are doing on the, when looked at in plan view, is making significant changes to the way the street looks, feels, and functions. There will be much larger mid-block curb extensions to have additional programming, either with sort of benches or potentially sort of pop-up events, outdoor dining, other sort of programming features where some semi-permanent or even permanent installations can occur that can't today. Okay? There will also be sort of upgraded materials throughout and a whole new range of street trees. We'll describe each of these details as we move through. The key piece of the design, though, is that it's designed for flexibility first and foremost, that on a day like today, there may be sort of on-street parking, much as you have today. That on-street parking area, however, could be repurposed over time, maybe over the course of a day, a week, a month, or a season, for something like outdoor dining, or a parklet, or a pop-up event like a festival, or pop-up retail. But there's a great more, a great deal more sort of flexibility, both for sort of community purposes as well as retail or restaurant use. So to give you just what that, you know, could look like, just looked at from the entire street side. This would be sort of a standard day with cars moving up and down the street, but maybe there's a festival that pops up for a week or a weekend where, with a street that is designed specifically for that use, as opposed to having to adapt a more auto-oriented street. To get into the details for a few moments, in thinking about the way the street is actually put together, there are a great number of different, what we might call sort of paving zones. We have designed each one of those with care to look, both to the sort of the feel and function, but also to the historic quality of Third Street. So we're looking at continuing the standard two-by-two-foot concrete sidewalks that you have throughout downtown today, but augmenting those with red brick pavers, preferably permeable pavers where possible, in those mid-block curb extensions. That the road itself would be concrete. The, that concrete would be scored differently from the sidewalks, but also have different, differentiated scoring within the intersections, to call intersections out. That roadway would be augmented by darker gray integral concrete crosswalks, as well as banding strips in the, what are called the valley gutters, which would be between the on-street parking area and the roadway to bring some definition to that, to that One of our key goals is about sort of safety and connectivity, and one of our key design principles is about accessibility. And with that, knowing that this is, and I realize I may not have said, one of the most important pieces up front, this is a flush curb design, or a flush curbless design, in that the roadway will be at the same grade as the sidewalks, okay? Which is what allows for some of that great festival use and pop-up event use. In an environment like that, to make something that is safe, connected, inclusive, and accessible for all residents and visitors, we need to include some features that will ensure their safety and their accessibility. What you see here in yellow would be those areas that define crosswalks. Those would be what are called sort of truncated domes or detectable warning surfaces. We're proposing that those be in sort of a Corten steel or sort of a weathered, uncoated cast iron, to again, have that sort of historic look and feel. And that those blue stripes that you see on our diagram would be sort of tumbled basalt, such that they are detectable by folks using sort of a cane or facilitated device that would keep them safe from accidentally sort of entering the roadway in that flush design. As I mentioned earlier, the street trees are one of the key features of the street today. The way the trees today arch over the street and have this wonderful sort of tunnel effect is really key, and the trees have been the most important part of our dialogue with both our project advisory committee and with the citizenry as a whole. We've designed a new street tree approach that both incorporates the existing trees where we can, but also looks to maintain that tunnel effect while diversifying the overall canopy and really bringing some seasonal variety and color to the street. To break that down for you, we have columnar trees, which would be a type of ironwood or Persian spire parodia, that would be at the side streets. The medium canopy trees, those ones that would sort of arch across the street, would be American hornbeams, much like you have on many of the blocks today. Those would be augmented by a narrow canopy tree, particularly an Armstrong maple, another tree which is featured on Third Street today. And those would be augmented by small trees and planters, and I'll describe those planters to you in a few moments, that'll provide some seasonal color. Those would be the various versions of maples, depending on which tree and which, or which planter box and which location, those trees could vary. Those would also be complemented by what we're calling showy accent trees, either a flowering cherry or a flowering dogwood, that would bring just a little bit of color pop to the street at different times of year. Where necessary, tree grates would be used, again, with a Corten steel or an uncoated cast iron that gets a sort of a weathered look, that again, augments the historic look and feel. As I mentioned earlier, the street trees today are causing a lot of cracking in the sidewalks. One of the proposed techniques to help prevent this in the future would be to use something called soil cells. Soil, right now, the way that most street trees are planted is within compacted soil because the sidewalks have to rest on top of something that is very, very stable. That really hard, compacted soil makes it hard for tree roots to grow through. With a soil cell, it's actually a plastic crate, and you can kind of see it in that image in the upper right from Denver, Colorado. That's actually an installation that's going in literally right now. That, that, those plastic crates actually hold up the sidewalk and allow sort of uncompacted soil to be planted for the tree roots to grow through. Those soil cells can also accommodate stormwater, so they can be sort of essentially a dual function. They can provide a great environment for trees while also managing stormwater. And that's something that we're proposing to be given greater consideration in the next round of design.
Mayor, are we waiting till the end to ask questions, or can we ask questions along the way while they're in our minds?
I'm going to leave that to you.
I'm happy to answer questions in real time if it's easier for you.
Councilor Chenoweth, do you have a question?
I do. How did you guess? So on what you just described, if you can go back a slide, I see one place where this is being done. Has this been done in multiple places? Do we have some sort of proof that this works out well in the end?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, absolutely. Soil cells are, have become a very, very common technique in urban streetscapes all over the country. That example that I gave from Denver is something like a $75 million project. It is a really, really big investment, and they feel like it is absolutely the way to go, because they have researched it from Boston to Texas to Minneapolis to Seattle. So it is a very well-proven system.
Yeah, I just know that the learning process on trees and cities has been one that's taken many years.
Yeah.
I mean, I live in a neighborhood in McMinnville that is just a disaster if you're trying to walk, because we thought we were planting the right trees and we're, we didn't plant the right trees.
To say it back to you differently, there's been a long quest from landscape architects to try to find what's the right tree in an urban environment, and it actually was the wrong question. It's really what's the right system in which to plant them, and that's where the industry is going.
As long as these have been proven, that's all I'm after.
Can I add to that question? Thank you.
Councilor Payne?
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Kim. Sorry. So to Chris's point, what's the length of time that a soil cell can last before it's deteriorated and no longer supporting the roots?
Now, that's something that needs a little bit more thought. The answer is, you know, many decades. It does depend on different soil types, different sort of acidity. There's some additional work that we're going to need to do. We can say that there, these can be replaced over time, so you can actually pull up sort of individual sections of the sidewalk and replace them, as opposed to having to rip out a much larger section and replace the entire tree. So there is some ability to maintain them over time, but it's many, it's many decades. It's not, it's not a five or 10-year investment.
Councilor Peralta?
Thank you. Back to the conversation about the surfacing for the streets. You said that you had selected concrete rather than asphalt, and I was, I don't know really much of anything about paving, but I did think that concrete was a lot more expensive, and even though it has a longer time to need maintenance, that the maintenance is actually quite expensive for that compared to asphalt, so I was wondering what the basis was for selecting that surface type.
Well, I could answer it in a couple of ways. First of all, the cost piece actually is fairly sort of dependent on the market at any given time. I actually did a streetscape a number of years ago where concrete was actually the cheaper capital expenditure. So there is a sort of a time component to that. Generally, you are correct, though. Concrete does last much longer before repairs, so there's a sort of trickier math that gets involved on what that maintenance cost really, really looks like over time. The answer to the question about why it was selected, it really was the preference of both our project advisory committee and the community at large when we surveyed the community, that the look and feel of concrete, as far as unifying the entire, the entire street, and having, in this curbless design, having the entire street read as one piece, essentially as a large plaza, was a key deciding factor. Last thing I'll mention, and then my colleague Jason may jump in, because he probably knows more about this stuff than I do. I don't know why I'm still talking, is that when, in a curbless design, when you, when you do have sort of two different materials that sort of butt up against each other, in this case, in your example, it's sort of asphalt and concrete, it does create some joint sort of concerns, and the concrete can help limit that. All that said, did I get any of that correct?
You got all of it correct. I would like to add one piece, though. So with the curbless design, we have some areas of the streetscape where we are constrained on our ability to provide desired crossslips, right? So you might have a few sections where it's a little flatter than you might typically design the street, and concrete tolerates that much better than asphalt paving does. So that, it also helps facilitate the curbless design, as far as drainage goes.
Thank you.
Councilor Payne?
Thank you. As, with lots of relatives with mobility issues, the basalt is a little bit concerning because it gets really slippery, especially as we transition from the dry season back into the rainy season. It gets kind of this algae sort of slipperiness. That's just a point, not necessarily a change request or anything, but I wondered if the committee considered biochar to strengthen the concrete.
That's an interesting question. It has not been, it's not been discussed, and it's something that we could certainly explore in that next round of design when you get into that level of detail.
I think we might have some.
I would also mention, just to be quite clear on the basalt piece, that really is only for that, that sort of rough and tumble sort of area where we're trying to get detectable warning. The idea with basalt was that it was a local, locally available material, but we can certainly look at other options. I have more to show unless there are questions now.
They want you to move your mic close.
Oh, sure.
That's everybody on the table.
Okay. I'll just keep going. How's that? So in addition to, in addition to street trees, we have other plantings up and down the street. First of all, there will be at-grade planting areas at all the corners. We still, we haven't not yet picked the, what plant material might go in there, but to continue to sort of add some greenery to the street. So those will be at each, each corner. We will also have, one of the things that's absolutely wonderful about Third Street today is all the incredible planters that you all have out there now. We would use a standard planter, which will be shown in the upper left. We're talking about maybe using multiple sizes for, depending on location, to add a little bit of variety. May even do them in a couple of different colors. We're also recommending that the large Stasney planters that are out today, those that can be saved and carried forward to the next round should be. They're absolutely wonderful and a good part of the history of the street. And that those would be augmented with hanging baskets at the streetlights that we chose and would be stout enough to withstand holding flower baskets as you do today. I mentioned earlier that there are large bench planters. Those would be at the mid-block curb extensions, that those planters would have some kind of maple within them, depending, different kinds of maples in different parts of the street, that they would be wrapped on all four sides by benches, so that folks can either face restaurants, for example, or a retail store, but they can also face outward towards events when those are occurring. The, I just mentioned streetlights a moment ago in terms of the hanging baskets. The streetlights will be the historic fixtures that you all enjoy today, either a pendant fixture at the intersections, or an acorn fixture at the mid-blocks. Those would be augmented by lighted bollards that would help to light up the crosswalks, particularly at the, at the mid-block, where it's important there because the trees may not allow, as they grow older and taller and with larger canopies, they may not let all the streetlight from the standard fixtures hit the ground. So we want to augment those with lighted bollards. Those would also occur at the intersections. We're showing two different versions here. The idea is that they'll have a historic look that looks and feels like the, like the other fixtures. The, our committee just hasn't made a final recommendation on which one to use at this point. At intersections that have traffic signals, like you see the example sort of in the upper left at Fifth and Evans, those would be integrated, the pendant light would be integrated with that fixture and would have a historic base, so again, that they maintain that historic look and feel. In addition to the standard lighted bollards, there may be an opportunity occasionally to use an artistic bollard, something that has a sort of a different light pattern or a different sort of artistic feature, maybe that means some special meaning to the community. This would have to be sort of designed and built into the project, but it's something that the committee was interested in, but no final design has been determined at this point. In addition to the lighted bollards, because again, this is a curbless and flush design, there would be bollards that would guide vehicles around the corners. Those would be non-lighted bollards, they would match the lighted ones, and they would define that curb edge. We should also be clear that the curbs have been, the curb radii have been designed for different vehicle movements, depending on which intersection, so just know that that is obviously a key piece. In addition to the formal lighting that the city would provide, there's been a strong interest from community members to have decorative lighting options throughout, and we are working on power options for, for this lighting. You'll see some different examples. This is not something that will be designed as part of the project. This is usually something that is done by either a sort of local civic group, like the Downtown Association, or different businesses. You'll see some of the examples we're showing here, though, are from McMinnville itself, others from around the country, that just give some ideas of the kinds of ways that lighting can be used to augment and celebrate wonderful activity up and down the street. In addition, our, we, earlier on in the project, we had a business resilience expert who also recommended quite vociferously getting the historic buildings themselves, the facades lit up in various ways to celebrate that incredible architecture as a way of creating a much more welcoming environment in evening hours. So just a couple of examples here. Again, these would not be part of the project, while the city may explore grant options to help business or property owners. With such lighting, this would generally fall to the private side. Another piece in a similar vein, that same business resilience expert, expert had strongly recommended paint for just the wonderful architecture, that rather than sort of the one or two colors that we see throughout a lot of downtown today, that the different architectural features be called out, that maybe some of the awnings get removed, so you see more of the historic, historic facades. And I think this before-and-after shot from Oregon City pretty well makes the case of why one might consider that as well. Back to the streetscape features, there's a standard bike rack that we're recommending. It's a standard sort of U-rack. It would be painted in black to again, match the color of the light fixtures. The, they would have a lean bar, which makes it a little easier to lock. It also provides a branding opportunity, should the city be interested in that. Those bike racks would generally be clustered at corners, although we could look at some occasional sort of racks up and down the street, depending on a particular business need or desire. Those could be augmented with artistic racks. We're showing just a couple of examples here. Our assumption would be that you all would work with a local artist or fabricator to design a bike rack that is both safe, functional, as well as celebratory of the McMinnville The waste receptacle that's been chosen for the project would be sort of a standard black car garage. These car garages are, they're called a car garage because in that center image, you can see a rolling trash cart that can be rolled in and out of them. They are the easiest for the local hauler, in this case, recology, to use. They are becoming a standard throughout municipalities around the Northwest because of their sort of ease of use, and because they can be wrapped with artistic wraps that could celebrate, again, sort of local artistry, local symbology, and those wraps could be changed over time, depending on, you know, seasonality or community desires. There questions or concerns?
No, I just had a question. Maybe this is for staff, I'm not sure, but, and that there's a point to it. Were the streetlights that we have on Third Street primarily paid for by the city, or were they paid for primarily through donations from the community? Yeah?
I'll take a gander at that. I think it's a combination of both, actually. So if you walk down Third Street, anything that was provided as donations by the community, you will see a plaque on that particular product that says that it was donated and who it was donated by. Not all the street standards were donated by community members.
Got it. Thank you. And just going back to the lighting and some of the existing infrastructure, is there an intent to replace all of, I mean, I get this is a complete redesign of downtown, but I'm someone who's into reusing where we can. I mean, are you going to be reusing the holes or any of the existing fixtures, or is there value in doing that, you know, or not value because it's more expensive to do that? I'm just curious.
I don't know that we're, that we're fully at that level of design. We haven't evaluated each, you know, each light standard. I would say generally, when I've worked on these streetscape projects before, we've often found that, you know, the fixtures do need, they have some life in them, but maybe not enough for this, in this case, a sort of a 50-year investment. What we've more often done is found other locations for those lights where they may be, you know, given sort of less stress. And so, for example, we're in a project where all the lights went to the Parks Department and were, we sort of put into their sort of replacement battery. So we could certainly look for reuses of things, whether they would get reused on this particular project, I think that would remain a question.
Thank you.
Councilor Chenoweth?
Thank you. Since we're talking about lighting, when I look at these two pictures, I just want to throw out as part of the discussion, when you do get into more in-depth on what you're picking, I look at the acorn fixture and I'm concerned about light pollution. And so I would urge that when you're having these conversations about fixtures, that light pollution is part of the quantitative discussion in what we're going to be picking. Typically, it doesn't change, cost a lot more to go one way or the other, but it does make a big difference to our ability to view the night sky, the less light pollution we're putting out, so.
Completely appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with that, too.
Councilor Payne?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate Councilor Chenoweth's comments. We don't have room for an acorn fixture. We need Filbert fixtures, actually. Sorry. Oregon punny there. And to Council President's point about sort of the sponsorship donation piece, I'm curious how much of that work has been done to build relationships or try to, the pursuit of donations in the process that you're in right now, because we're looking at planting boxes, trashcans, which we'll probably end up saying "I love you" on them at some point. But, sorry. But the bike rack, I think that's a really unique opportunity for somebody may want to sponsor the placement of a bike rack.
So Councilor Payne, we are looking and we've, we're creating a list of opportunities for people to contribute in some way to this project. We're in the early stages of that. What we want to be thoughtful about is as we look at resources to bring into the community to construct the project, those resources may have strings attached, so we want to make sure that what we're preparing to do in inviting the community to participate, that it doesn't put us sideways with opportunities like federal grants or programmatic dollars. So I think we need to really peel the onion on the opportunities and crosswalk those with the resources for funding the project.
Councilor Tocolsky?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Within the packet, I didn't see anything about traffic box art. Is that, is that a plan?
Yeah, it hasn't, well, maybe that's a great segue. I believe that art is actually one of the very next things we were going to talk about, so I can maybe mention this a bit. There will indeed be public art throughout the project. You did say traffic box art.
I'm talking about traffic boxes specifically. We have some by the library that are not utilized, and then they get graffiti all over them.
Yeah, no, it's a wonderful idea. What we haven't come up with is a full sort of art program. What we have, we recognize that there will be a sort of a need to include sort of art, you know, through the project, both from a community standpoint, as well as for, depending on the grant that we get, there may end up being sort of a percent for art that is required as part of the project. What has to happen, though, is a really robust conversation with the community about what kind of art they'd like to see. We've, we're showing just a few examples here of, whether it's sort of statuary, whether it's sort of inlaid pieces, whether it's a temporary piece, like that little ghost that you see in the upper left-hand corner, which you simply paint on the ground, whether it's a rotating piece of art, like the Coraline Cat that you see on the bottom left-hand corner. There's any number of ways that art can be approached, and needs to be, but we would expect that there would be a robust process to determine what and where and how that art should be deployed.
And if I can, Matt, Councilor Tocolsky, so Steve Ruff is in the audience tonight. We have met with the McMinnville Downtown Association's Public Art Committee, which is the, the committee that installs our public art program here in McMinnville, and have started conversations about this project and public arts, interactions with it. And I know he's very keen on the utility box public art. We've had that discussion, as well as statuary public art, too.
Mayor, one or two more questions. The planter boxes are a really great idea. I like that because they look nice. Who, who do you, you don't have to answer this, but who do we envision maintaining planter boxes? Do we already have that set up?
It's a wonderful question. And it is actually one of the key next steps. When we get to, there's a whole
Okay.
A bullet on that on our next step slide. There are any number of sort of maintenance questions that have come up throughout this, throughout this project. We'll say it's, besides the street trees, it's been the number one question that community members and our committee members have had, is who's going to maintain individual items up and down the street? There are a lot of questions, I think, that still have to be determined about that. In other words, what's the, what's the city's role? Would an organization like the Downtown Association, or is it McMinnville, or, you know, fill in the blank, you know, what role could any organization play versus? know, fill in the blank, you know, what role could any organization play versus private businesses, et cetera? Those have yet to be determined. There are some really interesting and creative solutions on how to do those kinds of things and we can continue to discuss those, but we want to be entirely honest with you that there are some elements that we've not determined.
That's fine.
The general assumption, I should say, for the fixed elements, you know, on the street, for the furnishings themselves, in this case, the, you know, the bench itself, the physical planter itself, the general assumption is that those materials would be maintained by the city. There are some things like plantings, that's where I can get a little bit, maybe potentially more creative on that. But even with those, there may still be, as there has been in the past, some opportunity for sponsorship, et cetera, and those have yet to be determined.
Sure. And then on the planter itself, we have benches downtown right now that are on Third Street that are unfortunately either deteriorating it or being removed because people have taken up residence on them almost permanently. Is there a way that you can create architecture that makes it so that people can utilize these in the manner which is appropriate? And I don't need an answer tonight, but I'm asking that you do.
Yeah, I mean, there are, in the case of a bench planter like this, we can install armrests for those, and that's been a discussion amongst our committee members about, you know, whether to do that. So there are some ways to think about that. I think the overall approach from our committee's standpoint has been to make this as comfortable a streetscape as possible, recognizing that this really is for the, you know, for the community and for visitors. So we understand that there's a delicate balance, but we are trying to make this, again, as welcoming an environment as possible.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. I think we have one more question from Counsel Chenoweth.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So you showed those pictures of all the plaques that are already down there. Some of them are specific to donations, right? So those are not the ones I'm talking about in my question. I'm talking more about the ones that are in memory of or on behalf of or that kind of thing. I assume, but I didn't, I wanted to ask it to make sure my assumption is correct, that we're going to do our best to make sure all of those are transferred over to whatever new stuff is going to be down there. Is that an accurate assumption?
Maybe I'll say it this way. It is an action item that we know needs to be tackled in the next round of design is exactly what to do with all those. The overarching statement is that they need to be sort of preserved in some fashion. Exactly what that means, we're not sure if they're going to get, would they get sort of reapplied to another, you know, another planter or a bench? You know, that's, you know, one potential idea. Could they be incorporated into a plaza of some kind? Could they be inlaid into the concrete? There's any number of things, could they be moved to a park in a certain memorial? We're not sure yet. That's a conversation that has to occur with, you know, with community members and obviously we want to be thoughtful and careful and we want to incorporate family members of those folks when and where we can. So it's a lot to be determined, but we recognize it as an absolute piece that needs to be addressed. A few more things to show you and then we'll try to wrap up. Mentioned benches a moment ago. There is, in addition to that big planter box, there will be a sort of a standard bench. It'll be sort of a metal bench that complements the other streetscape features. We're looking at two different styles, one with a back that's a little more comfortable and one that is backless. Why would we do a backless bench? It's so that you can face either a restaurant or an event that's occurring. You know, imagine having a standard bench with a back. If you can't sit on it to watch a parade, then it's, maybe it's not serving its full function. So we're trying to think about the application and exactly where any of these benches may end up before making a final determination. There would also be a drinking fountain that serves both sort of folks who are ambulatory, folks who are in wheelchairs, as well as four-legged friends. When you start to pull all this together, you start to get a streetscape that looks like the image you see here. This is that mid-block curb extension that is in part being used by sort of restaurant for outdoor dining, maybe seen from above. You might have a festival or some kind of pop-up retail events occurring. One more key piece that I have yet to mention is our gateways. There's three of them on the street. Southwest Adams and Southwest Baker are a couplet gateway because they're the two one-way streets that form the state highway. Those are the welcoming moments from the state highway into downtown McMinnville. For Southwest Adams, we're proposing a gateway arch to span the street, shown there in that orange line, that would also, when standing at the library or coming from City Park, would be a big welcoming moment into Third Street and into downtown. That arch would be complemented potentially by branding within an integral color, potentially within that concrete crosswalk, I'm sorry, intersection. And those themselves would also complement the existing public art that already, or it's, public art privately provided at First Federal. At Baker Street, where there's not room for a second arch, there would be room in the northeast corner for a piece of monumental art. We could also complement that with that same complimentary branding at the intersection. And then on Johnson, where there's also, at the intersection itself, where we'd love to put an arch, there simply won't be the room, given the signal, the signal poles, but we can put an arch about sort of halfway down the block, which we think will actually work quite well, and there's some precedents in other communities for that, including Old Hilliard, Ohio, shown in the lower left-hand corner. That would also be sort of complemented by, again, branding at the intersection. With that, how do we get there? This is a robust plan that your community members have spent a lot of time and effort over several years now designing, and we've tried to design the street that they want. The question is, how do we actually bring it to them? I'm going to turn it over to my colleague Jason, who will talk about the cost estimate.
Mayor.
Thanks, Matt.
I have one question.
You have another question?
Yeah.
Counsel Tocolsky, real quick.
So I think that it's a neat-looking plan so far. There's a lot of great items that are getting added. I also see that there's a lot of, well, there's fountains, there's beer, there's wine, a lot of liquid in. Do we have restroom plans?
It's a great question, and it's one that I think we would need to give sort of further consideration in the next round. One of the issues with Third Street itself is that there's very little public space besides the street and the sidewalks, right? We don't, we don't have a public park or plaza on Third Street itself. There are sort of other pieces that we know need to be sort of given further consideration. A restroom would be one. Potentially sort of augmenting business access during construction could be another. And off-street parking, I'm sorry, on-street parking that will be modified as part of this project, that would need to be incorporated off of the street. In other words, there's a few elements that aren't directly on Third Street that need to be considered for the function of Third Street, and that would be one of them. So we don't have an answer for you yet, but it is something that we can, again, add to the list.
Okay. I just asked that we consider that because when I had small kids on Third Street and you're running, you have no idea where to go.
Completely understood, and we know that the individual businesses often feel the pressure to serve that need, so.
Thank you.
No issue.
Okay, so, yeah, so I agree, Matt has shown, you know, quite a few exciting features. I do want to call everyone back to one of the initial slides that we showed, that this is an infrastructure project at its core. There's a lot of infrastructure, both, you know, at the street level and below Third Street that has exceeded its useful life and needs to be replaced. You know, utilities, electrical, landscaping, so this project pays for a lot of, a lot of things. And most of that would have to be, or most of the costs would have to be paid at some point anyway. Like the storm drain lines need to be replaced, the sewer lines need to be replaced, the sidewalks are not, do not meet accessibility requirements. And so as part of the 30% design, we have prepared a detailed estimate, which I believe is near Counselor Packet. And that design includes, because we're only a 30% design, we've included a healthy contingency to address potential unknowns that may come up in the future, and the estimate also includes design and construction management. So this is a, you know, summary breakdown of the project costs by element, again, provided in further detail in your packet. As you can see, the base estimate is around $20 million. And you throw in the contingency, the design fee, construction management, and we end up at close to 29 million. So the expected range is 28 and a half to 31 million.
This is where you get to ask him some questions.
Counsel Tocolsky.
Where's the bathroom on here? I'm serious. Are we, there's no bathrooms included, right?
There's no bathrooms included, no.
Okay. It just puts a lot of undue pressure on the local businesses when you have, you know, people running in and trying to use your restroom.
Yep.
And it's really not awesome for tourism either. I'll leave it at that. Thanks.
Counsel Chenoweth.
So I remember a few years ago, making a trip to Salem and pitching the need for money for this project, and the number was substantially smaller when I was going to Salem pitching this project. My memory is 10 million. What happened along the way that transitioned this from 10 million to 30 million?
So I'll let Matt jump in if I missed something here, because I was not involved in the project at that time. But my understanding is that project essentially was a streetscape project. So you're looking primarily at the surface improvements, the landscaping, the sidewalks. This project has brought in a lot of infrastructure needs that are, you know, urgent and will require replacement at some point in the near future. So you add in the replacing all the storm drain lines, all the sewer lines, a good portion of the water lines, and you have significant cost. And also, that was some time ago, right? Construction prices have increased quite a bit since then.
Sorry, we should also mention that the, in going from a typical curbed design to the flush, the flush design, did add, you know, some additional, not only design time and time to our process, but did add some additional cost for some of those, some of those key details.
Any additional questions? Oh, Counsel Chenoweth.
It's still a massive increase going from where we were, and I can, I can kind of swallow it under the concept that we are going from a street level now having to go multiple layers down to fix infrastructure. But my memory was, we were even saying then that we had to go multiple layers down to fix infrastructure. So I think it's just a hard change to swallow, like some of the other changes I've had to swallow recently. And I think Jody's getting ready to tell me what the difference.
I appreciate your memory. It was prior to this project starting, and we made some assumptions when we pulled that ask together. We were being encouraged by our elected officials at that time, at the, our state representatives, that that was a good number, and if we felt we could get the project in under that, that would be great. We didn't know what we know today. It's a fuller, richer project, and again, this is about building a street for the next 50 years. So we're, we're doing more than what you'll see, and the benefit will have a very long runway.
I'm all in. I'm all in favor of that, as long as the end result is we can't get the funding because we've increased the price so much in what we're doing, which is concerns I have with another project we're going to be talking about at some point in time, probably today, is that when you, when you start shooting for the moon, you lose people along the way, and it makes it harder to get the funding that you need to accomplish the goal. So I don't know what I don't know. I'm not an expert of streets. And if this is what it takes to fix the infrastructure, I get it. I just wanted to express that.
So just, so you have a plan, hopefully, to apply for a grant in the future. I know we're still a little ways from that.
So we're moving on to next steps, and I'll let
You're going to talk about that?
Matt outline that.
I'll just hold off.
Jody muted me. Actually, yes, I'll take this one. So there are multiple means to potentially fund the project. You know, first and foremost is, is a federal build grant, which the city will be applying for, I understand, in 2026 and potentially 2027 if 2026 is not successful. There are other grant programs available. There are utility contributions from Mac Water and Light and the City Sewer Fund, urban renewal funds, and then of course, there will be some city contribution as a requirement of the grant, a matching contribution.
So to be really clear, the federal build grant is the, you know, the main target right now as far as, as far as funding for the, for the project. It's a, projects of this scale do fit within, within those limits. It's a, it's a big ask, but it is a really well-formed project, so that is the main target. But the city will continue to look for other sort of grant opportunities, particularly for, you know, certain components. We can, there will be no doubt some cobbling together for, you know, for key pieces up and down the street, either for the, on the physical side or the programmatic side, for example, business resilience. So there's still work to be done on the funding side, for sure. It is the major piece that has to happen going forward. But know that right now that the main target is the build grant, which is why it's at the top of the list.
So is the build grant, it's matching, generally?
There will be, there will be a matching component, and what that, what the final determination, that has, that has yet to be figured out.
And so we're assuming that those funds would come from the urban renewal? Just want to, when it says city, I just want to clarify.
Yes.
Urban renewal.
I think that's the, the idea. It would also be something where it could be a legislative ask. To put a finer point on what Jason said is, the intention is to prepare the city to apply in '27 for the build grant. It's a substantial lift for the city to do this, so we want to make sure that we've got all of our, it's very data-driven, so we have to have all of those components pulled together. We also have to understand what receiving a grant like that would mean for the city. And so we have to do our due diligence there. We have to look at things on how a contribution, how a donation would fit into that, that component as well. So there's a lot of pieces that we need to unpack with that very complex grant process. So that, the idea is that this next year, we'll be pulling together the components so that we can successfully apply in '27. We'll be hopefully further along in the design of the project, which will be a benefit to us as well.
And the utilities too, so the sewer would be part of that match as well.
Oh, okay. Thank you. So we have just about eight more minutes, and Chris, Counsel Chenoweth, do you have another question?
No, just a statement. I do appreciate that, that we are working in processes to lay the foundation for getting grants, and I do appreciate that that is not something that is an easy process. It's not one that the city actually, I don't think, used to do 10, 15 years ago. So I do appreciate the process and get what we're doing, despite my concerns that I already voiced. So I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Any other questions on the dais? I just want to say thank you. I think it's a beautiful plan. I hope it all comes together and we get a grant and can put it together, but I know that the committee has spent a lot of time on this, citizens and employees, staff, and I just want to say thank you. It's really nice. Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it. We would encourage you, I know there were a lot of next steps questions that came up. There's a slide here, there's a much more robust section in the, in the plan that describes those next steps. If you have any questions, you know, obviously, we and city staff would be more than happy to discuss those with you.
Perfect.
And Mayor, if I could also share with everyone, we will have a demonstration block. This summer, we're going to be kicking off on June 27th, the second weekend of Mac Fresco. The Public Works Department will be taping off the street to show where the improvements will be, so the community can actually experience the street. It's going to be between Evans and Ford. And my request to you is that you encourage people to go down and experience what this new street will look like. We want our elected officials, our friends, our stakeholders to understand how it will improve our ability to use this as a civic space. At the same time, you'll be able to click a QR code and you will have a virtual experience of the street through concept drawings, so you can stand on the street and move around and experience it. So we hope that throughout the summer, people will really come to understand what this improvement will look like and how they can enjoy it for the future.
Thank you. I'll now adjourn the joint work session meeting at 6:54. I'll now adjourn the joint work session meeting at 6:54.
I always look at it on our iDrive, so I'll look for it while we're, this goes on.
I was, what I was trying to get a sense of is for the community center, not the city. I was trying to get a sense from the conversation there about parks, about, you know, how committed it would be to try and compare that to the, um, it's my sense is that it's great.
Susan did that presentation in a work session a couple of months ago. I'll, I'll go through and try to see if I can try to find the facility system. When you look at it, just looking at sort of, they did it quickly, shields sort of-
We're getting cold.
And then we were looking at sort of life cycles of different systems, right? Those are the ones that type of things.
I'm gonna zoom up the elevator.
Yeah, and was populating all that information. So, but I think Susan's team also drew the map, and that was assessment.
I'm just, yeah, but that needs to be interplayable.
It, it doesn't need to be, so to have programs that that happen, right?
But, but it might be, I mean, but in order to be safe.
Yeah, there's, there is, and I'm not sure that we've done that type of analysis on the building. Um, there, there's needs of doing that with historic buildings. And I know a little bit's been done, so if you look on the, you know, the eastern side of the building, that, that reactor system on the outside, that was, yeah, somebody's interpretation. No, it's not how it's done today. Yeah, so, Jeff might know more about, he, Sal's asked me about the work that's been done in terms of the assessment of the community center and investment.
Here.
Counsel Payne?
Here.
Counsel Geary?
Here.
Counsel President Peralta?
Here.
And Mayor Morris?
Here.
Now, if you're able to stand, please stand for the pledge. I've asked IT Director Scott Burke to lead us in the pledge tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which this stands, and to the nation without borders, with liberty and justice.
Next, we're going to move on to public comments. Any interested audience members are invited to provide comments, and any comment provided that requires some type of follow-up will be assigned to a staff member. Anyone may speak on any topic other than a matter in litigation, a land use decision that is or will be in front of the city council, or a matter, matter scheduled for a public hearing at some future date. Comments will be limited to four minutes per person for a total of 32 minutes. If you are on Zoom and wish to speak, please use the raise your hand feature or chat feature, and send a chat to the city recorder team. Once your turn is up, we will announce your name and unmute your mic. Claudia, do we have anybody signed up?
Yes. And before we start, I do want to state for the record that we did receive public, written, emailed, public comment that I have emailed you, and will be made part of the amended packet posted tomorrow. First, we have Robert Spitz. Next, we have Sila McLellan.
Sila.
Okay. Next, we have Kevin Chambers.
Kevin, I'm glad you're here.
Thanks.
Welcome.
Hello, Council, and Mayor Morris, thank you for having me. I'm representing the CPR PAC today, and we submitted in your packet, then, another proposal for the bond updated with some updated numbers. Our updated numbers, we've, it's been a bit of a moving target. We're a volunteer group. We don't have a lot of funding. We've been trying to get numbers for you as easily as we can. We've been lucky that Redmond, Oregon is currently building a project for a combined pool and recreation center, and they've been very open with sharing their data and their experience. And so, would they, their building is a 56,000 square foot building, which is roughly about what we're shooting for, between that and up to 60,000. And they're currently building it for $49 million. So, that gives us a pretty real estimate of what it would cost. Their building is not exactly what we want, but in terms of a, a good allegory, it's been a useful exercise to kind of look at that as a number that is fairly realistic. So, we did add some contingencies. We do want a bigger pool, which costs more. That's something that the swim club and the swim team at the high school has said that they would like, and some more space for competition. So, that would add some money, and then adding contingencies for building in a few years. We are now confident we could build that type of building for just over 70 million, which is a little less than we were expecting before. And so, what that does is, keeping under the target of 100 million allows us to add some more broad projects that we think would get a lot of support in the community. And I wanted to go over a few of those with you. We want, we added back in money for the senior center and for the library, $4.5 million each. That would allow us to make those spaces more usable for the people that use them. So, for the senior center, be able to put some updates, some safety increases, and then for the library, add more room for the children's section, which is one of the most used places from the library, and also add some bathrooms and change how the bathrooms work to make them safer, more accessible. And we also added $9 million for repairing mostly park structures at a, a lot of different parks, including Bendo River, Kingwood, North Evans, Dragon Park, Discovery Meadows, Linear Park. This is all laid out in the PROS Plan and is designated to be used for bond funds, and it's mostly replacing play structures and repairing existing parks. We also added money for infrastructure around the facility, the new facility, including 1.5 million for new pickleball courts and 1.5 million for a turf soccer field, which are two things that we've heard a lot in the community that people want. And then finally, we did also add money for rehabbing what, where the pool currently is. You know, we are just, we're listening to the urban renewal district, that gateway. I think we can do a lot of, we want to dedicate some money to make sure that that building is taken care of appropriately, and then that park is usable going forward. And then the final thing that Redmond also gave us was their operating budget. So, they gave us where, what their plans are for how much they're going to charge and what the costs are going to be for that building. I spent a lot of time looking at our current budget and their budget, and I'm very confident to think that we could operate this new building without having an increase to the general fund. Again, it's based on service level, but I'm pretty confident we could run the new facility without having to increase the parks budget. So, thank you so much for all of your support so far, and we hope that we can keep this project going and get a ballot on in November. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Mayor, may I ask a question of the person who just spoke to us before he walks off?
Yes, you may.
Thank you, Kevin.
Yes.
So, my question is, when I went through that, I'd noticed the comment, or the line item for the existing pool.
Mm-hmm.
What are you envisioning is that $2.5 million going to be used for?
It's very open-ended. That's something that we have just gotten a lot of questions on, is people just didn't want that building to sit and deteriorate, not have a plan for it. So, we wanted to set aside money that, again, all of this will be part of the bond process after the bond passes, once we start putting the dials. But I think that that's to, however counsel or that committee wants to use that money, we wanted to set aside dedicated money for dealing with it, so it doesn't just deteriorate and become an eyesore.
So, to be more pointed, the intent would be not to rehab that pool and have two pools?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Claudia?
That's everyone that signed up for public comment, that's public comment. All the three that I have left are regarding the city budget, so those would be heard for the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we're going to move on to the public hearing. We will now begin the public hearing process of the agenda. For all public hearings being heard this evening, please state your first and last name and city you reside in for the record. Each person testifying will be allotted three minutes for their testimony. Additionally, not listed on the agenda under public hearing, we will be holding the public hearing for ordinance number 5162 for Downtown Economic Improvement District. Public hearing on uses of state revenue sharing for fiscal year 2526 is approved by the Budget Committee. Does any counselor need to declare a potential or actual conflict of interest or recuse themselves regarding this topic? Hearing none, I'd like to call on Katie Henry, Finance Director, to give a presentation on the topic.
And I apologize, I'm having some computer issues which kicked me out when I got added on as presenter. There we go. Good evening, Mayor, Counsel. First, I was, like I said, I was kicked out and didn't hear which hearing we're working on right now.
For ordinance 5162, the Downtown Economic Improvement District.
Mayor, I'm sorry.
I thought we were starting with state shared.
Yes, we are.
State shared revenue or, or downtown economic?
I'll start painting above it.
I'm getting mixed signals from the room. I apologize.
Public hearing on use of state revenue sharing. Sorry, the way it's written, I read it differently. So, state revenue sharing.
The use of state shared revenues, okay.
And just one moment, we have a comment from Counsel Chenoweth.
No, I thought you were, if we were going to the EID, I need to recuse, but if we're not, I'm good.
It's just listed different. It's okay. All right. Director Henry, you're on.
I apologize for, for the mix-up here, and now that I have you here, my screen is not working too well, so, and I can't share. Could I please have the ability to share my screen?
Okay, you should be able to.
Okay. And with that, here we are. This, the purpose of this hearing is to discuss or take public comment on the use of state shared revenue. This is a duplicate in a way of the hearing that we had during the Budget Committee process regarding state shared revenue. There have been no changes during the Budget Committee process, and no comments have been received by finance at this time. We have $480,000 in the budget for the estimate of state shared revenue, and the anticipated distribution that you see here on the screen is to distribute it between the departments shown, so our Administration of Finance, Engineering, Community Development, Police, Parks and Rec, Park Maintenance, and Library, which are our generally funded departments based on their share of the total general funds received. So, this simply allocates it based on the share of expenses that are funded by general funds. And that is all that I have to share. This public hearing is required, and we do have to elect to receive these in order to receive those revenues from the state.
Does any counselor have any questions of staff? Counsel Payne, do you have a question? No? Okay. All right, so now we'll start the hear, the hear the public testimony. Each person testifying will be allotted three minutes for their testimony. We'll start with the people who have signed up in advance to testify. Please remember to include your name, address for the record. Claudia, do we have anybody signed up?
No one has signed up for the state use revenue.
Okay. Is there anyone on Zoom? Okay. No one on the phone, so we have to keep going. So, that concludes our public testimony for this evening. Does the staff have anything they, they would like to add to the record at this time, or does city council have any additional questions for city staff? Okay, so I'll now close the public hearing. Okay, we'll move on to the second public hearing. On the fiscal year 2526, city budget is approved by the Budget Committee. Does any counselor need to declare a potential or actual conflict of interest or recuse themselves regarding this topic? I'd like to call on Finance Director Katie Henry again.
Mayor? Well, we have Counsel Geary raised his hand.
Counsel Geary? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, excellent. I think Finance Director Henry's internet weirdness is contagious. Mine's been doing a little on the fritz too, but just as I did when we opened the budget hearing, I just have to declare, my wife works for the McMinnville Public Library. I made this declaration every year due to her class and compensation, and my ability to vote on this budget isn't affected by that. So, just declaring a potential conflict of interest, excuse me, Mike. So, just declaring a potential conflict of interest, but it doesn't affect my ability to vote.
Thank you, Counsel Geary. Okay. Anything else? Okay, we're going to move on to Finance Director Katie Henry.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I will keep this very brief. We've had extended conversations about the budget. The only thing that I wanted to share with the public before taking any comments on this budget is the revised projection, financial projection. This is included in your packets. I wanted to just briefly go over this. In the light blue, you will see- In the light blue, you will see the projected ending fund balance. This '26 here is the year in question. This is the budget that you are, that we are having this hearing on at this time. The current approved budget, this is the budget that has been approved by the Budget Committee, that will go forward to council and be voted on at our next council meeting. The dark blue is two months of operating expenses. The light blue is the ending unappropriated, ending fund balance. And then this is the projection out three years of what we expect over the three years. The lines up here, the red line indicates expenses, operating expenses, and the revenues indicate operating revenues for each of those years. This is something that, as the public, we have seen in several of the comments, and I wanted to share that before taking testimony. Other than that, I have nothing to add, as there have not been changes since the Budget Committee meetings, which were well-attended.
Okay, does any councillor have any questions of Director Henry? Okay, we'll now start the public hearing testimony. Each person testifying will be allotted three minutes for their testimony. We will start with the people who have signed up in advance to testify. Please remember to include your name, address for the record. Claudia, who is the first person to testify this evening?
Yes, before we start, I do want to state for the record that a lot of the emailed written comments were budget-related, which I've sent council, and all those will be added to the amended packet posted tomorrow. First, we have Linda Hayes.
Welcome, Linda.
Thank you, Mayor, City Councillors. My name is Linda Hayes. I live at 206 Northwest Fifth Street here in McMinnville. And I'm here because I missed the budget meeting, and I know exactly, I feel like a Dutch bullet on that one, honestly. But I do feel like it's my responsibility as a local business owner to weigh in on this and express that I feel like it's, the quality of life of the families in McMinnville are very important to me. Giving our families all that we can with services that our community offers through the library, Parks and Rec and Community Development should be at the very top of our budgetary priority list. Also important to me is the economic health of our community. People visit and move to McMinnville because of the incredible sense of community that they feel here. The infrastructure for that needs to be funded. Our police are a very important part of that infrastructure, but they're part of that, and I would like to see more balance in the cuts that are being proposed. Back when, back when she was the ED of the McMinnville Economic Development Partnership, Jody Christensen had a conversation with me at the shop, and it stuck with me. She told me that to project the number of jail beds that would be needed 20 years out, they use the numbers of children on the free and reduced lunch programs. So that, to me, indicated that very much that our social issues and our need for police funding starts with our children and whether or not they get the support that they need. All of our children, but especially those most at risk, get that support through their community, through our community. The programs that are currently facing cuts, libraries, Parks and Rec, Community Development, are the programs that support all of our children and families. And it is my belief that if we want a rosier picture 20 years out, we need to make sure that our number-one resource for the future, our children, get all the programs and support we can afford to give them. Thank you.
Just one second. Does any councillor have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Next, we have Miriam Peterson.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Miriam Peterson. I live here in McMinnville. Several years ago, I would not have guessed that I would be having so many conversations with friends and family about McMinnville's budget plan. While I have found in doing, what I have found in doing so is that while I may bore a few folks, most people I talk to want to know more about the decisions our city is making on their behalf, how and where their taxes are being spent, what our city is planning and prioritizing, and how they might get involved. In previous meetings, several councillors mentioned their surprise that there was so much engagement and public comment in these budget meetings, and stressed the importance of transparency and trust between the city government and the community. I would draw a direct line between this degree of engagement and the work being done by city staff, particularly the Communications and Engagement Manager. If community transparency, trust, engagement are what you hope to grow as a council, this particular role should be one of the utmost importance to you. Eliminating, reducing, or outsourcing this work would be a clear step backwards in all of these areas. Secondly, as you continue to deliberate, I would like to express my concern again that the Budget Committee did not heed Director Henry's recommendation of a two-month reserve budget as a minimum. In uncertain times, of which we have seen a lot of in the past five years, it is concerning that McMinnville may not be as financially resilient as it should be. Lastly, I would like to mention that, according to the table found on page 38 of the 2025-26 McMinnville Proposed Budget Document, the Police Department was set to take a 1.44% net budget decrease, a total reduction of around $175,000. After the Budget Committee voted to add back about $520,000 for three vacant police positions, the PD will now be the only department seeing a general fund budget increase in the upcoming fiscal year. Public safety seems to be the justification for these decisions, but police presence is a limited way to view public safety. I would urge the council to consider the valuable input of city staff who reminded the Budget Committee that safety looks different for different individuals. A well-funded, well-staffed Community Development Department personally makes me feel safer, knowing that our streets and neighborhoods are designed with careful consideration and innovation. Cleanliness and maintenance of city infrastructure, vibrant public programming, clear city communication, emergency response, and de-escalation training are all equally important factors in public safety. It is unfair to put the entire burden of public safety on the police when other departments can also contribute with these preventative measures, leading to a lighter workload on the existing officers. Leaning on these other departments more heavily for public safety is especially crucial, as Chief Wood shared the hiring and retention troubles McMinnville PD and police departments across the country have been experiencing. With cross-departmental collaboration, we can respond to the varying needs of our community by being more creative in our definition of and solution to public safety. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Thank you. Claudia?
Next, we have Elena Mudrak.
Welcome.
Good evening. Don't mind the hat, just came from work, and I'm dirty. Hi, good evening, Elena Mudrak. Live at 135, or I live in McMinnville. Thank you for your time and incessant hard work. I know it's been countless hours so far, and I know you all are working towards the same goal, a balanced city budget. Work done today that will set us up for success, and something that won't lead us to financial predicament in the future, something that's sound and representative and supportive of the people who live here. Without much debate, I think it's important to note that a sure way to sack future budget sessions is through continued deferred maintenance. Projects that could have been completed a decade ago are now painfully more expensive, a product of passing time. Though it might be attractive to balance a budget by deferring maintenance in the short term, the long-term effects of this approach are sure to saddle the city with problematic facilities and financial stress. Critically, the budget needs to do its part in retaining citizens and inviting new citizens. Without a strong commitment to quality of life, McMinnville will experience attrition that it frankly cannot afford. Economic development, affordable housing, and short- and long-term planning directly address retention and attraction of McMinnville citizens. McMinnville has never adequately funded its Community Development Department, and I think we are experiencing some pains as a result of that right now. Our growth rate is not what was projected a handful of years ago. Addressing the issues that come with that sooner than later is sound financial advice. Cutting more from the Community Development Department might undercut city growth that's inspired by citizens. As we look at the proposed budget right now and reflect on previous conversations, I think we would be hard-pressed to call it a balanced budget. As noted, the smallest percentage reduction is proposed for the most funded department. 38% of the general fund going to the Police Department. If the Police Department were to take a cut akin to that of another department, say 10%, just an arbitrary number, that would free up over $1 million. If three vacant positions valued at $521,000 are moved from the budget, we're already halfway there without needing to be created, creative. This would not be unprecedented, since other vacant positions across the city are intentionally being kept open for budget reasons. Because the Police Department is having a hard time attracting and retaining officers, it would be wise for us to support this department. However, I don't think the proposed budget offers new solutions to old problems. I'm not calling for sensationally defunding the police, and I notice and appreciate the cuts that the department has made. However, this is a request for a balanced budget that reflects the community it serves, and for each department to proportionally do its part in supporting a balanced budget. Not for any one budget, not for any one department to take a cut above 20% while another department sees a gain.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it. Claudia?
Any councillor have follow-up questions for us? That's everyone that has signed up.
Is there anyone else in the Civic Hall that would like to speak? Okay, any councillor have any other questions? Okay, and no one on Zoom or the phone? Okay. All right, so that concludes our public testimony for this evening. Does the staff have anything else they would like to add on the record? Or does City Council have any additional questions for city staff? Okay, I will now close that public hearing. Next, we're going to move on to public hearing to consider Resolution Number 2025-21, a resolution adopting a planning and engineering fee schedule and repealing all previous resolutions adopting planning and engineering fee schedules at the time this fee schedule becomes effective. Does any councillor need to declare a potential or actual conflict of interest or recuse themselves regarding this topic? Okay, I'd like to call on Heather Richards, Community Development Director, and James Lofton, City Engineer, to give a presentation on the topic.
Thank you, Mayor and councillors. This is a public hearing to consider our annual fee update for our permitting fees for planning and engineering. In 2003, the City Council directed the Development Services to work towards a full cost recovery of development in McMinnville. So development pays for development. With that in effect, we started working on what does that look like in 2018, when we did a fee study with a consultant that came in and walked us through every hour to the 15-minute increment that we spend on this development review to establish what the actual costs are. We did that in planning. We came back to you with what the difference was for that and made a decision at that time. We were collecting about 10% of our program to incrementally build into a full cost recovery program for that and started implementing that. Last year was the first year that planning was at a full cost recovery program with the thought that there are some fees that we have made conscientious choices to subsidize in this community to support our existing business community. So our signage review applications are subsidized, street trees are subsidized for community residents, and there are a couple other application processes in there that are subsidized. Last year, we calculated that the subsidy was about $137,000 in terms of the cost of providing that program at those subsidies. But that is a choice that we've made as a city to provide those services to the community. Every year, we update the fees based on the CPI index for Portland from January to January. So this past year, it was 2.9%. So the fee schedules you see in front of you for planning and engineering were both updated with that 2.9% inflationary factor. And then we also advertise this public hearing and the fee schedule update in the News Register twice before the public hearing tonight to let people know that this is being considered by City Council. And we also share it with our development community as we're working with them, that the fees will be updated. This year, the fees will be updated August 1st, since we're bringing this to you here in June. We want to give enough notice to our development community for when those fees will be updated. I also wanted to bring to your attention, and James might talk a little bit further about this, but the engineering fees, they went through an engineering fee study last year to get into a full cost recovery program as well, and brought that to you as City Council. That was adopted. They have the same process in terms of providing a reduction in permit fees for those permits that are serving the community at large. So there's a 75% reduction for driveway and sidewalk permits built into the fee schedule in front of you. Lastly, the building fees are typically updated at the same time that we do planning and building, but we have to provide them to the state organ building division at 45 days in advance of bringing them to you, so that they can circulate it amongst the statewide development community with the basis that we have developers outside of just the city of McMinnville building here. Those have been submitted to them. It will come to you on July 22nd for also taking effect on August 1st as well. And I don't know, James, if you want to add anything to that?
The only thing I would add is with the engineering fees going into effect last year, there was also a transitional period for projects that were already active. That phase in is complete come July 1st of this year. And so at that point, then, the full fee schedule will be in effect for all projects for engineering. Other than that, I think you covered everything.
Yeah, and just for clarity, so we're talking about current planning in the Planning Department, not the long-range planning program, which serves the whole community. This is for private property development. When someone's coming in and wants to develop their property, the review that we undertake as a city in terms of engineering, planning, and building to make sure that that development is safe for our community and meets our city standards. So it's really responding to the private market in that regard.
Anything else to add, James or Heather? No? Any councillors have questions of staff? Okay, so now we'll start the public testimony. Each person testifying will be allotted three minutes for their testimony. We will start with the people who have signed up in advance to testify. Please remember to include your name, address for the record. Claudia, do we have anybody signed up?
No one has signed up.
Is there anybody in the hall that would like to speak? Councillors, any other questions? That concludes our public testimony for the evening. Does the staff have anything else they want to say on the record? Nope. Okay, I'll now close the public hearing. Now, we will go to the public hearing on Ordinance 5162 and ordinance extending the duration of the McMinnville Downtown Economic Improvement Assessment District. Does any councillor need to declare a potential or actual conflict of interest or recuse themselves regarding this topic?
Out of abundance of caution, Mayor, I am going to recuse myself, as my business resides in the EID.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to call on Finance Director Katie Henry to give a presentation on the topic.
Thank you, Mayor. One more hearing for this evening. This hearing has to do with the extension of the Downtown Economic Improvement District and renewing it for an additional three years. So this, the DEID has been in place since 1986, I believe it is. And of course, my screen. I apologize, I am just batting a thousand with you in my presenting this evening. So the downtown, the EID was created in 1986, and it has been renewed every three years since then. The area in the district is zoned commercial, and so this does not impact any private residences. So those who were notified of this hearing are those who are impacted by the EID and by the rates for this. We were requested to extend this by the McMinnville Downtown Association, and there have been no changes in rates. Just to make sure that everybody who is watching or is in attendance understands what this is impacting, this is a map of the district. You can see here is Adams Street, here is Third Street here. And, like I said, I'm batting a thousand. And, like I said, I'm batting a thousand on my presenting today. The, the part shown in yellow is eight and a half cents per square foot, and the part shown in green here, the rate is at 4.25 cents per square foot. There is no change in that. This hearing is simply to extend the economic district for another three years. And that is all the information that I have for you this evening.
Does staff have, excuse me, do the councilors have any questions for staff? Counselor Cunningham?
Actually, I got a backtrack here just thinking about what Counselor Chenoweth said. I guess I might have a conflict of interest, being that my business is in the downtown. I'm not a building owner. So it's a potential, but I don't see it as a conflict, but...
Fair enough. Yep. Thank you. Anything else? Any questions down there? Okay. So we're going to move on to public testimony. Do we have anybody signed up to speak?
No one has signed up.
Okay. Oh, Sela. Come on up. It's okay. You look very cute today.
Sorry, we do.
Is your, is your microphone on?
I meant to, this is the moment at which I wanted to speak in terms of, I'm Sela McClellan, 412 Southeast Cowles. I own Third Street Books. I also own two properties within the EID, and I have been on and off the board of the MDA. And I'm currently back on the board of the MDA, and I just want to speak in support of the EID and in support of the Downtown Association. Well aware of budget cuts, and I just, I really believe in this organization, and no organization is perfect, and everybody's experiencing growing pains and changes, but I feel like this organization is really moving forward and does a lot for the downtown community. And that's it.
Any councilors have any questions for Sela? Thank you, Sela. Appreciate your time. Anyone else in the hall would like to speak? Okay. Counselors, any other questions? All right. That concludes the public testimony for this evening, and I will close the public hearing.
Madam Mayor, may I add one more comment from staff?
Certainly.
There is a requirement for this ordinance that there be less than 33% of individuals who contest it. And I just want to make a note for the record that there has not, that we have not met that threshold either before or during testimony here received during this hearing. And so as Finance Director, I see no, no reason we can't move forward with the ordinance that is later in this, in the agenda this evening.
Great. Thank you for that information. Appreciate it. Okay. So now we're going to move on to advice and information items. Reports from councilors on committee and board assignments.
Yeah. Sorry.
I'm going to start to my left with Counselor Tokolski.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. The YCOM Executive Committee met today, and Resolution 2025-01 through the county was adopted unanimously. It's the YCOM budget for 2025, 2026. Sheriff Elliott is doing a 190 agreement, which is trying to find a way that we can bring some stability and some predictability and some consistency to the user-do structure for YCOM rather than having a 10% increase, which is what we had this year, and perhaps another unpredictable increase next year. He's trying to get a group of people together to figure out how to make that do structure consistent, predictable, and also functional for YCOM. So that's kind of the news from today, and the next meeting that they have is on August 12th from 3:00 to 4:30. That's all I have.
Thank you. Counselor Payne?
Thank you, Mayor. DEIAC meets Thursday. Landscape Review meets tomorrow, and Lipstick's last meeting was canceled and rescheduled for July 23rd, so I've got nothing.
Counselor Gary?
MIRAC meeting did not happen, and then in between other meetings, especially visiting McMinnville, but I will pass on the news that we were in Food and Wine in an article listing the top small cities for food and drink. We're one of them. Food and Wine is a publication that reaches about nine million or so visitors a month, and so having McMinnville in there is a great boon, I'm told. That publication isn't on my reading list, but it's going to be great. I'll distribute that article for you all to read, but that's just a quick update from visiting McMinnville.
Thank you. I just have two things to report. I met with Athletic Director from the high school, Ryan McIrvin. We talked about the proposed bond, the school district's perspective, and also future partnerships between hopefully the school district and the city. I also met with Commissioner Kit Johnston on our regular monthly meeting, and we just get caught up on what's happening with the county and the city. Counselor Peralta?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to pass on briefly that I, in my role as liaison to the council of governments, I had conversations with the Executive Director of Council of Government, Scott Dadson. Just to get a little bit of background on the upcoming search for a city manager, as folks in the community know, or may have, may be aware, our, our city manager, Jeff Towery, has submitted his resignation, started that process. It's a difficult thing for me to talk about because I'm very grateful to Jeff for his public service and the time with the city. I know this was a tremendous opportunity for him to move to a larger city and have an even larger leadership opportunity, but I wanted to just take a moment to recognize you, Jeff, for your outstanding public service to the city over the past eight years. We will do something more than this later, obviously, but throughout your tenure, I have greatly appreciated your professionalism, the respect and support you have for the professional staff. You have pushed this council to focus on long-term priorities from addressing deferred maintenance to diversifying the city's revenue stream, a lot of things that people up here have a very difficult time doing, but I appreciate you for that leadership, and McMinnville is much better positioned for the future because of it. Jeff guided our city through the 20, the COVID-19 pandemic. McMinnville was the first city in our region to develop public policies around how the city would respond to the pandemic, and those policies became regional models for other communities. That is tremendous leadership. Initiatives like Dine Downtown, which is now Mac Fresco, not only help keep our local businesses afloat, but help build new traditions, and Jeff definitely helped facilitate that. Under his leadership, for the first time in two decades, the city passed a master plan, meeting our requirements under Oregon's land use laws and setting the stage for future development and growth in the city. He's also discussed a goal that has been discussed, that had been discussed in our community since 2005, which is the consolidation of the fire district and the expansion of the staffing levels for MAC Fire. He's the first city manager to centralize the human resources function at the city. Previously, that had been done department by department. Under his leadership, we gained critical tools to address rising poverty in our community from establishing the navigation center and project turnkey to being one of the first cities in the state to enforce, to create enforceable policies to address unlawful camping and remove unlawful vehicles. Those steps have strengthened both our humanitarian response to homelessness and public safety. He supported necessary changes to modernize our planning and building fees, improving cost recovery and transparency. And most recently, Jeff has led our city through one of the most difficult budget cycles we faced, working to preserve core staff services and our staff's morale through the hard choices that our staff had to make. His leadership, his long-term vision, and deep respect for public service have had a lasting impact on our community, and I look forward to you, Jeff, working with you through this upcoming transition. And again, would like to express my gratitude for you and your public service. Thank you. I didn't have the last one, sorry.
Counselor Chenoweth?
Thank you, Mayor. May 29th, Representative Andrea Salinas came to the Valley to discuss our transportation needs. Members of the Parkway Committee met with her where we had a robust discussion highlighting the regional needs that would be met by improving the transportation system between Portland and the coast. Also on May 29th, I went to the Yamhill County Board of Commissioners meeting, which I regularly attend. This one had an item that directly impacts this council, and I could see coming before us in the future. And that was they put some preliminary groundwork in place to potentially bring back dog control. Specifically, funds were allocated in a manner that would allow their use for this purpose in the upcoming budget cycle. On May 30th, Gustavo Guerrero joined Hannah Sweet, which is Senator Merkley's policy advisor on transportation. She flew out from DC to get a hands-on view of the transportation needs of Oregonians. One of their stops was, again, with the Parkway Committee, where we had a similar robust conversation to what we had with Representative Salinas. And then we went on a tour. The tour began on the northern entrance to the bypass and culminated at McDougal Corner. Once at McDougal Corner, we discussed the dangers of that intersection and the need to finally fund a long-term solution for McDougal Corner. Hannah had wanted to see all of these issues firsthand, so she had a picture in her mind when she was advocating back in DC. On June 4th, Swap PAC, that's what I'm calling it, that would be the Southwest Area Plan PAC, met for the first time. This meeting was a get-to-know-the-process meeting and a tour of the property. Much to my chagrin, I learned of yet another landmark in our community that I was completely unaware of despite having been here since 1982. That would be the PV Reservoir off Old Sheridan Highway that ranges from one to four acres depending upon the time of year and rainfall. On June 5th, EMWACT met with the main item on the agenda being a letter specifying the list of project priorities, which we will send to the OTC for their upcoming July 2025 meeting. We chose to highlight three regional products, projects in the body of this letter, and you can guess which one it was for Yamhill County, the Newburg Dundee Bypass. That's it.
Counselor Cunningham?
I do not have any updates.
Thank you. Claudia, do you have anything to report?
Yes. June 19th, city offices will be closed in observance of Juneteenth. I don't see Noel online, so I will just state about the Juneteenth celebration on June 20th from, give me one second, pulling it up. June 20th at Beerly Brewing from 5:30 to 8:00 PM.
Great. Thank you. IT Director Scott Burke?
Thanks, Mayor. Just one quick item to share tonight. IAS has been working with centralizing the city's cell phone service, and that process updating service plans department by department. People in this room probably got instructions to reboot your cell phones. If not, it's coming. Lori Morgan's leading up that project. When it's complete, the annual savings will be in the thousands annually, ongoing savings, some from Verizon price print reductions and others from just identifying and canceling underused lines. For instance, well, hotspots on all of our phones, which allows us to cancel a lot of the Wi-Fi devices that we have. And one of those is a few hundred bucks a year, so it's, it adds up to a lot when we're all done. We'll remake the final number, but just wanted to recognize that good work that Lori's doing.
Great. That's awesome. HR Director Vicki Hedges?
So it turns out I've been doing a lot of HR things lately, you know? We'll call it succession planning, things that really can't be detailed, but I did want to provide a report tonight, or an update on training, since I know Counselor Payne has been interested in that. We have a 33% completion rate, 35% in progress, and 20% not started. I also want to recognize that does not equal 100%. 13% have been canceled just from employees leaving since they were assigned. So I don't think that's a lot of progress since I last updated you, but we'll be working on that with the due date approaching June 30th.
Thank you. Scott Burke, Giaf?
Yeah. So a couple weeks ago in the session, I mentioned that we had a back sewer backup out on Third Street. We learned more about that and realized we needed emergency repair for that sewer line. Our city engineer made the call that we needed to do an emergency procurement. The cost was $30,000, which is actually $5,000 over the amount for a direct appoint on work like that unless you go through an emergency procurement process, which we did with, in correlation with our finance department to make sure we did that correctly. They got out there, they fixed the sewer line. It was a very long day. They started at 5:00 AM and ended at 9:00 PM. We were hoping they were going to be done at 11:00 AM before the lunch hour hit, so they were out there working. It was a pretty difficult job, but it's a really cool technology. We didn't have to dig up the street. We didn't have to kill some trees. We didn't have to potentially impact some water lines, so it was, it was really great that we got through it, and that's a lot to do with our conveyance staff, our engineering staff, and our contractor that helped us out on that project. Council received a letter from DEQ stating that we are a designated management agency for a temperature TMDL. Designated management agency is an OAR definition that essentially says DEQ can tell us that this is something we have to start managing. It's some, the exact same thing that happened when we got our Mercury TMDL. But they are not moving forward with the process of actually having us develop a TMDL plan. Their reasoning for that at this time is we don't own enough of the property along the creeks. So most temperature TMDLs are handled by tree plantings and shadings along creeks right now. So they're, since we don't own a lot of creek property, they're not having us do that, but that is something that could come in the future, and it's going to be a difficult thing because most creeks, a lot of their shading is from ash trees, which are endangered right now from the MRO ash borers. So that's going to be a pretty tough one to work on in the future. And then lastly, Director Richards was kind enough to share her work session next week, so we are going to make sure we get in a work session on the airport master plan. Hopefully, that will get adopted this summer. Thank you.
Thank you. James Lofton, do you have anything to share?
Good evening. I do have a couple updates in response to the tragic accident out on Southwest Old Sheridan and Southwest Cypress. Engineering has reached out to our engineering support services consultant to help perform a traffic analysis at that intersection. And so we, we are working on that now. I will have more to report in the future on that subject. I would also expect that to be further evaluated with the TSP, with the development to happen out there as well. Couple other things I wanted to bring, bring up. One is a special thanks to all the folks out in the Chandler's addition. That community's been really patient. That project out there has taken longer than what we would have liked, and a lot of the final paving, we weren't able to get to it last summer due to the, the, the long construction season comes to an end if you don't have great subgrade conditions. We are, we are finally getting to that point now, and we hope to be out there grinding and paving next week. And so thanks to the community and their patience, that project will be coming to a close in the near future. Paving is also going to be starting up out at Cypress and Fellows near the school out there, Columbus Elementary. That one is going to have a, a very large impact on traffic, and so we've been getting the word out. We've sent out mailers. We have door hangers that we've been getting out. I think there's, Jeff's working with Noel on a, a post to go out to social media. We also are keeping our engineering website up to date, and we ask that if you receive phone calls that you direct folks to engineering or the website. That's where we will have our most up-to-date information. But that, that is a much-needed project to fix the failing street sections out there, and we're looking forward to getting that done. Any questions of me?
I don't think so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a moment. Counselor Chenoweth?
Yeah, how, sorry. Thank you, Mayor. How long do you anticipate that project on Cypress is going to take?
It, it depends on what we find once we open it up. The, we're, we're set up for kind of two results. If, if we grind off the surface and we find that the subgrade is not adequate to support pavement going back right away, then we need to overX and place back rock. That will obviously take longer than it would turn a couple-day paving project into potentially a few weeks. If we open it up and the subgrade yields well to loaded dump trucks, then we're able to pave back right away, and it will be a much quicker process. So fingers crossed we're able to find that. So fingers crossed we're able to find that. We anticipate there will at least be some amount of overX. We don't know how much yet. So we've also structured that project to be multi-phased. So once we do this first piece by the school, we're hoping to have a better understanding of what to expect for the other two sections, so we can be ahead of that and better about letting the public know what to expect for those two.
Chief Wood?
On the 5th, the department had a visit from two auditors from the Northwest Accreditation Alliance for the department's onsite assessment for reaccreditation. Everything went very well, and I expect to receive our reaccreditation in the very near future. Like to share some appreciation publicly for Captain Tim Simons, who is the one that has the primary responsibilities for the care and feeding of our accreditation program. He does an excellent job, and the process went very, very smoothly.
Great, thank you. Director Richards?
Thank you. I have a couple of things. I wanted to let you know, in addition to the airport master plan next week on Wednesday for your work session, we'll also be bringing you an update on our natural hazards and natural resources planning. We've picked that back up, and we're moving forward with that and had our first internal meeting, and we'll be starting to have more work sessions with you over that planning. Our goal is to get it done by the end of the calendar year. Also, I wanted to let you know we're getting close to issuing a permit for homes to start the grading on the first phase of their development out in the West Hills. The first phase does not involve a lot of tree removal, but we do expect that once we see equipment moving dirt on the hill, that we'll start to get a lot of phone calls and concerns about that, so just wanted to let you know. We are reviewing each phase in terms of its impact to both the land and the grading needed for it and the tree removals very closely and diligently with the developer, so we'll keep you apprised as that moves forward. We also learned, we submitted two applications for federal allocations through the senator's office. We learned one of them is not moving forward, so based on what's happening at the federal level and the clawback of the grants that weren't out last year, they're resubmitting the fiscal year '25 projects. They've also been limited on the number of projects they can submit this year, and so they removed one of our projects, which was funds for a low and moderate income sidewalk replacement project to help our lower-income neighborhoods with that sidewalk replacement. But the Alpine Avenue project is still moving forward. We submitted for $1 million for the street improvement for Alpine Avenue for four blocks of that, and that is still moving forward for consideration, so we'll keep you apprised of that project and how it navigates the process. I wanted to share with you a great recap of the Southwest Area Plan starting, so thank you, Counselor Chenoweth, for that. That's going to be a two-year process. The project advisory committee seems very engaged. I thought it was a great discussion that evening. Lots of different perspectives at the table and participation from property owners, so it will be, I think it will be a good planning process, and I'm excited to see what comes out of that. We also just received proposals for our ADA Transition Plan. We received four proposals. We're reviewing them tomorrow. The ADA Transition Plan looks at barriers for accessibility on all publicly-owned facilities, so both the right-of-way and buildings, and then starts to develop an action plan for removing those barriers. We expect that work to really get underway probably in the fall. You'll see more activity with that work in terms of the survey and inventory of our facilities moving forward. And then wanted to share a little bit about building permits. I often get questions about what's going on in the community and what's going up here or there, so I thought I'd bring a couple of those. I don't have a library of things, but we do have development of things in the community. So we are getting ready to issue the permits for the Pique Hotel. That's on Alpine Avenue, the 17-room hotel. I expect we'll probably issue those this week and get moving on that project. And then we're currently in review on the project that's called West Side at this point in time. It's the mixed-use project on the corner of Baker Creek Road and Hill Road, the six-acre project that will have both commercial and multifamily development. The first phase of that is in for building permit review right now. We're working through that. The first phase will be the multifamily aspects of it.
We have a question from Counsel Gary.
Thank you. The last I heard from planning the RFP for the TSP was going to go out at the end of May, early June. Can you give me an update on that?
Sure. We met, we sat down with our engineering team to, after the budget discussions, that we heard the concerns about the workload that we're putting on staff and staff capacity. We did sit down, and we do this periodically with our partners internally, so the engineering team on these projects, and talked about what we can get moving forward now and what we can delay. The TSP is one that we see as one that's vital. We would like to get that moving forward. It is in draft form, and we're currently finishing up the draft, and the community development department will send it to engineering for their review. They will need about a month to review it, so we're thinking we'll get that out in July sometime at this point and get moving on that. And then that, we are delaying the downtown master plan update until the fall.
Thank you. I'm going to jump over to Director Henry.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I wanted to update all of you on the transparency project, which I assume that you have noticed has been absent, and we had hoped that it wouldn't be by this time, that you would have been getting updates. Unfortunately, we have been really unhappy with the service from the provider as far as the rolling out of the project goes. And I finally, last week contacted management. I escalated the issue over the head of the individual that's been working with us, and we were able to sit down with the managers and requested that our implementation manager be replaced. So we have a new project manager as of yesterday. I've requested that we get a proper project management schedule with detailed deadlines. What is the schedule going to look like? I want a Gantt chart with timelines that I can present to you so that we can bring you, get on the schedule, a presentation for council in the fall, and get you all logins and that you'll be able to use this transparency tool like they promised us at the time that we purchased it. So my first thing is an apology to you that it's not launched yet. My second is to let you know that the finance team has been working tirelessly and yet has been beating their heads against a wall even during the time that I've been out on leave, and we're finally turning it over. So they will not, they will be assigning us to, or we've been assigned, I met with them, with the manager-level individual, and they are committed to extending our contract. All the hours have been used up, and we have no product for no cost to us. They will not be billing us for any hours, and they're committed to getting that out. So I just wanted to give you that update so that you know where things are at, and I will continue to give you updates as we move forward on that project. Are there any questions on the transparency before I move to the next piece that I need to update you on?
I do not believe there are.
Okay. The other piece is that we are heading into the audit. So I know that there are several members on council who have not been through an audit with the city before. So our interim audit will start the week of the 23rd, and part of this interim audit does, part of the audit itself does involve some communication with council on concerns about fraud and, you know, how the general overview of the city goes and policies and those kinds of things. So just a heads up that you may get communications from auditors or things like that. If you have any questions, don't hesitate to contact me to clarify. The auditors will at times come to you directly because they need to get specific information without it being clouded by others' opinions, especially when it comes to fraud and things like that. So if you have any questions, don't hesitate to ask me. We will have auditors working with us the week of the 23rd. That's the interim audit, and then we will have the regular audit that will happen in the fall. And we will also have a federal audit this year. It looks like we are ending up with more than $750,000 in federal money with FEMA funds starting to come in from a storm that was way back when, but it's now coming in, so that bumps us up to the level of having a federal audit as well. So you can expect quite a bit of activity going on with auditors between now and November. So that's what finance will be working on.
Thanks for all the happy news.
Thanks.
Who has a question? Counselor Chenoweth has a question for you.
So the $750,000 you just cited that's coming in from FEMA, was that part of our budget?
So it's not $750,000 from FEMA. The limit for having a federal audit is $750,000 total from the federal government. There is approximately $200,000 from FEMA. That's a reimbursement for expenses that already occurred in the past. Whether or not those are in the current year budget, I am not sure, but it impacts our stormwater, our wastewater, excuse me, fund, it's not a general fund.
Perfect, thank you.
Revenue.
Okay, so it looks like that's all the questions. Thank you very much. Attorney Lightburg?
Thank you, Mayor. Only a little bit of some unfortunate updates. It's been a while since we have talked about dogs, but the dog situation involving the incidents of a night in May are not yet behind us. While we were done with our municipal court prosecution, that has since been appealed to the circuit court. We are handling that. There's a lot of unknowns, but we don't believe there's a lot of merit there. At the same time, there has been a suit filed in, a civil suit filed, that CIS is taking on for us, again, springing from the same issues. Again, not very meritorious, but we are approaching that. The reason that this is in an update right here and not in a closed session is because it still is very preliminary and minor, and there's nothing for council decision or action at this time. I'll make sure that you're updated as things go on.
Thank you. City Manager Towery?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, a couple of items to report. We're going through our initial review of applications for the Parks and Rec director position. That's underway this week. Once we get to a number of applications, that we'll be designing an interview process around. Vicki and I will be working on that, and she will share with you calendar holes and process dates and the like relatively soon. We'll note that we have a new employee in Parks and Rec, a woman named Susan Muir. She's been hired in a work-back position, part-time, to help us with the Culture, Parks and Recreation Bond. You'll see the occasional email from her and see her at a couple of upcoming work sessions. I want to let you know that I'll be out of town for a long weekend, June 20th through 23rd. And I just want to thank Council President Peralta for his kind words and note that while I'm proud of all of the items and more that he talked about, those were all team efforts. I was happy to be part of oftentimes a very large team of people to move those issues forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we're going to move on to a Summer Fund presentation from Katie Noid from the Community Center. He's the Community Center Manager, and it looks like Courtney is going to join.
Hello.
Hello. Now we got it. Thank you, Mayor and council, for having us here today. On the screen behind you and in front of you, that is just a slideshow that we have. I'm not going to go over everything on there. My name is Katie Noid, and I'm with McMinnville Parks and Recreation, and with me is?
I'm Courtney Terry, and I'm with the Public Library.
So the Summer Fund program started in the summer of 2020 with just four activities as a way to safely host programs outdoors and serve our community. And I'm going to echo Counselor Peralta's comments about City Manager Towery. He came, the story that I heard is that he came to Jenny Berg and Susan Muir and was like, "We have to do stuff in the parks. We have to get outside." And so that's where it started, and it has grown. This year's schedule for Summer Fund includes 143 events hosted in our parks, city facilities, and apartment complexes. We prioritize reaching those furthest from opportunity by bringing programs closer to them with the understanding that not all community members have the availability, transportation, or means to use our Parks and Recreation or library services. We are all aware of our community's concern and perception of safety in all of our parks, and we are increasing our activities in a lot of parks, but in City Park especially, to facilitate a more welcoming and safe place for families to play and enjoy being outdoors. This year, the theme for Parks and Recreation Month, which is in July, is Build Together, Play Together, and the library's summer reading theme is Level Up at Your Local Library. I'm going to say that again because I kind of didn't say it really well. Level up at your local library. So when we are planning for Summer Fund, which consists of Courtney, me, Samantha Gary, and Gina Parks from Parks and Rec, as well as a lot of other people, we really build on our sense of community through free, inclusive, mobile, and family-friendly activities for the McMinnville community. As you all know, the Summer Fund program makes our community a better place, increases quality of life, makes long-lasting connections between our staff, our community members, and our partners. So many city departments work together to make Summer Fund happen. We extend our gratitude to all the staff from the Public Library, Parks and Recreation, as well as park maintenance, communications engagement, police, all of the people that are here. All of their departments get affected by this because I ask for a lot of things and help from a lot of people.
You do. I know, I learned my lesson with the like, yeah, that thing.
Yeah.
Hello. We would also like to say thank you to all of you for your support, as well as a big thank you to our partners that help us put these programs out in the community. Some of our partners include, I was trying to practice like breathing as I gave this list because it's so many and they're all so wonderful, so I'm best shot. Library Foundation, Friends of the Library, State Library of Oregon, the Friends of the McMinnville Senior Center, the McMinnville School District, the OSU Extension Office, Yamhill Community Care Organization, the Fostering Hope Initiative, Yamhill Valley Doulas, Nerds of McMinnville, and many more. Again, this year, we will be having our summer concert series on Tuesdays in July in City Park, as well as storytimes, wellness walks, cultural performances, the bookmobile going out to various locations, teen programs, movies in the park, and much more. I feel like I almost listed almost, but there's 143, so we know I didn't. The calendars are now available at the Aquatic Center, Community Center, Library, and Senior Center, and the detailed Summer Fund booklet will be available this Thursday at the McMinnville Farmers Market at the Summer Fund booth, and Katie and I will see you there, depending on what time of day you are there. And then, of course, all of this information is also available on the city website under, click on the Summer Fund button, or you can go to bit.ly/macsummerfund, which is B-I-T-dot-L-Y-slash-macsummer.
Real quick, I want to remind everybody, Claudia already brought it up, but the Juneteenth Celebration, spearheaded by the DEIAC, Parks and Recreation, Library, Beerly Brewing, and MAC, McMinnville Community Media, Friday, June 20th, 5:30 to 8:00 p.m. in front of Beerly Brewing. It's going to be great. Our Summer Fund kickoff is Saturday, June 21st, from 12:00 to 2:00 p.m. at City Park. We hope to see you this summer.
Thank you both. Oh, we have a question from Counsel Chenoweth.
I always have a question. I don't know how this works, but are you still going to do zucchini races this year?
Yes. Zucchini races are on Thursday, August 14th. I would say if you want to participate anything, send an email to Jenny. That's how we usually do this, so I'll see when she gets back if she wants to reach out to you guys. So if you want to do anything, if you want to announce certain things, we can do that. It is super fun. We have had Counselor Gary and Counselor Chenoweth for the past two years, three years?
Well, three years I was supposed to, but I missed last year because vacation time drawn.
So it's a good time. All of our activities are open to the public, all All of our activities are open to the public, all ages. We have toddler activities all the way up to an ice cream social at the Senior Center that's open to all ages. So we really just want to have our community involved in our programs.
Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Does any council request to have any item removed from the consent agenda and heard at its regular place on the agenda? I do. Counselor Payne, what would you like to have removed?
Six D minutes, draft minutes, just a couple of typos.
Okay. So we'll have the consent agenda minus D from that. Do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda? So moved.
Second.
Claudia.
Counselor Cunningham.
Aye.
Counselor Tokolski.
Aye.
Counselor Chenoweth.
Aye.
Counselor Payne.
Aye.
Counselor Gary.
Aye.
Counselor President Peralta.
Yes.
The consent agenda has passed as amended unanimously by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you. Okay, so now we're going to consider the draft minutes of April 22nd, 2025. Counselor Payne, would you like to?
There's just two very small typos. So Jason Henness's last name is spelled wrong. It actually has two S's, two M's, two S's. And then Lipsec is L-P-S-C-C, local, no. Oh, my gosh, now I'm questioning it. Local Public Safety Coordinating Council, yeah, I had it right. Just correcting the acronym.
Did you get that, Claudia? Okay. So do I have a motion to accept the minutes of April 22nd, 2025 as edited?
So moved.
Second.
That was Counselor Cunningham, and second from Counselor Chenoweth. Claudia?
Counselor Cunningham.
Aye.
Counselor Tokolski.
Aye.
Counselor Chenoweth.
Aye.
Counselor Payne.
Aye.
Counselor Gary.
Aye.
Counselor President Peralta.
Yes.
And the minutes are approved unanimously by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you. Now, we're going to move on to a resolution, to consider Resolution Number 2025-18, a resolution of the City Council adopting the city's 2025 Housing Production Strategy. So HPS, docket G4-24. Call on Evan. Oh, there you are. Okay, Evan from Associate Housing Planner to present.
Thank you. I'm just going to share my screen. All right, so I think we're all ready to go. So my name is Evan Hipps. I'm the Associate Housing Planner for the city. We also have Beth Goodman with us, who is from Echo Northwest, who's a consultant on the project to help with any questions that the council might have. But tonight's, we're considering Resolution Number 2025-18 for the Housing Production Strategy, which is docket number G424. So some of the most recent steps that we've been taking in finalizing this process. To finalize the HPS, we had a work session with City Council on March 25th. We then had a work session with the Planning Commission on April 3rd. And from those work sessions, there was a list of 16 actions that were being proposed. And so just want to note that none of those actions have been removed or modified, and no new actions have been added since those work sessions because we were given the guidance to move ahead with those as presented. And then a public hearing was held by the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission also provided a recommendation on May 15th. And the recommendation was a vote unanimously in support of the adoption of the HPS. And then City Council is considering the resolution today. So for the City Council's strategic priorities that relate to this work, the housing opportunities goal is to create diverse housing opportunities that support great neighborhoods. And then the growth and development goal, to guide growth and development strategically, responsibly, and responsibly to enhance our unique character. So I'm going to start with just an introduction on the Housing Production Strategy process because it is a new one for the state. So just kind of even starting at a higher level and just orienting people who may be less familiar with Oregon planning processes. So Oregon statewide planning goals were established in the 1970s. There is a total of 19 different goals, and goal number 10 focuses on housing. And it overall requires cities to do kind of three things. So maintain an inventory of buildable land, anticipate future housing needs, and then strategize and set up zoning to address those needs that have been identified. With the state of housing being what it is recently, there's new legislation. The one cited here is from 2019, which is Oregon House Bill 2003, which requires cities over 10,000 population to study the future needs of community members and develop strategies that encourage the production of that needed housing. And so there's two specific kind of studies or reports that are required as a part of that new legislation, which are called the Housing Capacity Analysis, or sometimes referred to as a Housing Needs Analysis, and then the Housing Production Strategy. And for cities that are outside of the metro area, every eight years, there's a cycle to update these two reports. That kind of happened sequentially. And so how that looks locally with the city of McMinnville and the compliance with that new state law, the city adopted the Housing Needs Analysis, which satisfied that requirement of the Housing Capacity Analysis in 2024. And then the city needs to adopt the Housing Production Strategy within a year, so in 2025. And then the HPS is implemented over an eight-year work plan period from 2026 to 2033. And I just wanted to note some of the funding that will help support the important work of that implementation. So the construction excise tax, which is a 1% tax on the permit valuation for development that comes in, which was adopted in 2022 under ordinance 5112. It supports things like affordable housing programs, development incentives, and funding for dedicated housing planner. Also, the ongoing Planning Division staff work for some of these actions, such as our area planning efforts, or, you know, code amendments that have been identified. It will be kind of part of that Planning Division staff work. And then also looking for opportunities at the state level for programs and funding. So with the new requirements, the state is, you know, starting to roll out some of those different grants or programs that can help support this work for cities. So we'll be looking for which ones are applicable to the actions that we are proposing locally. And then just ongoing coordination with partners, especially at the local level. And I think a lot of this coordination happens pretty effectively through the Affordable Housing Committee and some of the community members and some of the staff that work locally that can get us connected with people to kind of bring our resources together. So for the rest of the presentation, I'm going to talk a little bit more about the HPS process and kind of the, more specifically, the adoption process, then go into the development of the HPS, so how we came to the actions that are being proposed, give an overview of what those actions are, and the implementation schedule that's being proposed for them, and then staff's recommendation. So once again, this obviously looks pretty similar to the slide just previously, but the Housing Needs Analysis helps identify what the local housing needs are. So we've done that work, and it's been adopted in 2024. And now the HPS is building off of what those needs were and how we want to meet those. So the actions that are being proposed need to address those local needs and the barriers that were identified in the Housing Needs Analysis. And there's 16 actions that are being proposed in response to those needs that were identified. And then over the eight-year timeline for the work plan from 2026 to 2023 is when those actions are implemented, and there's a midpoint check-in with the state along the way. And then how we've been working through this project specifically for the HPS, we've been working on it just over a year. So in the summer of 2024, we began analyzing those housing needs in more detail, then started working with city boards and commissions and the general public on developing the housing actions. And then now we're kind of in the third stage of the process of finalizing the report and moving into adoption. And so it's worth noting that the HPS is a little bit different than like the Housing Capacity Analysis. And per the ORS 197A 107, the adoption of the HPS is actually not a lay-in use decision and not subject to appeal or review under lay-in use procedures. A public hearing is actually not required for this process. However, the city elected to conduct one with the Planning Commission because it is something that we wanted to make sure that people had an opportunity to provide input or testimony before we moved it forward to City Council. The only public testimony that we did receive was from Rob Halliburton, representing Friends of Yamhill County, who provided testimony in support of the adoption of the HPS. And then for the state review procedures, just to orient you on kind of what that looks like and what the role is after the local adoption. So after the local adoption through a resolution, within 20 days of that adoption, it would be routed to DLCD. And then within 10 days of them receiving the city's HPS, they notify that and put it publicly published on their website. And there's a public review comment period that begins. And then they actually have 120 days to complete their review with three possible outcomes. So one is to approve the HPS as presented, approve the HPS subject to further review and actions, or the third would be to remount the HPS for further modification. And then also wanted to call out Attachment 1. It's just showing what the requirements are for these reports and then where you can find those. So the left just outlining what the requirement is, and then the right column just saying where that's located in our HPS specifically. So just wanted to make it really clear that we feel we're making, meeting all those requirements and where to find them. And then the ongoing coordination, so talked about this just a little bit, but, you know, as we're working through the implementation over the eight years, there is a midpoint report that's due four years into the work plan. So we detail what actions were completed. We provide the results of the implemented actions and, you know, the impacts that they're actually having on housing. And then we also have an opportunity to identify potential hurdles to implementing the actions and provide rationale to work through them, or work with DLCD staff to review the action. And the state is also working on setting up what's called the Housing Acceleration Program, which if cities find that they cannot meet the requirements and commitments that they set out to do in the HPS, they are referred to this Housing Acceleration Program to identify the specific barriers and then work into an agreement to identify a formal path forward. And this may result in opportunities to have technical assistance, regulatory support, or help identify funding if that's what the barrier is to implementation. So before moving in to more of the details of the HPS, are there any questions on that process that Beth or I could try to answer from the council members on just the adoption process and the implementation and review process?
Any questions on the dais? There are no questions, Evan.
Okay, thank you. I'll move ahead then. So going into the development of the HPS Action Plan. So the public engagement that we conducted, we really based a lot of this on engagement that's been completed going all the way back to 2018, 2019, which was a citywide growth strategy engagement campaign. But then, just over the last year, we also did conduct committee and commission meetings. We had a community survey in the fall of 2024 with almost 500 results. We conducted several focus groups and interviews with key stakeholders. We had a project webpage promoted at ongoing Planning Division events, and then also hosted webinars in April. So focusing just for a minute on some of that engagement from 2018 and 2019, which was done under kind of the campaign of growing McMinnville mindfully, allowed an opportunity for community members to help us identify challenges and barriers that they were either experiencing personally when it came to housing or helping us identify what the key barriers they felt, you know, others in the community were experiencing. And then also helped identify some growth values. So how does the city want to accommodate growth and development into the future? And three key themes that we carried into our work in the HPS was to protect the small-town charm and aesthetic, provide housing choice, and the concept that everyone deserves to live in a great neighborhood. And really what that resulted in is the Great Neighborhood Principles, which outline things that get a little bit more on like providing access to parks and a mix of different housing types, a mix of amenities. So making sure that, you know, kind of within a walking distance, there's a vibrant community that everyone deserves to live in. So back in 2019, when we were working on the Housing Capacity Analysis, and we were actually already kind of moving into the step of what is now formally called a Housing Production Strategy. So the city at that time was already working on, okay, we've, you know, identified those needs, and now we're wanting to put some actions together to help address what those needs and barriers are. But that work was just put on pause with the state legislation that was going on just to make sure that we were putting together a report that met all the requirements that state law required. But there was a lot of good ideas and good work that was being proposed at that time. So this table here is just kind of outlining, you know, what of the 16 actions actually came from that previous work in 2019? And then what are the more recent actions that are being proposed through our project advisory committees or, you know, our discussions with you and the Planning Commission? And it ended up being eight actions kind of from each of those efforts that are being moved into this final Housing Production Strategy. And so just real quick here, there, like I said, you know, we've been meeting with project advisory committees, the Planning Commission and City Council primarily through joint work sessions, and then the Affordable Housing Committee throughout the process. And then getting into the HPS action and the implementation schedule. So just wanted to make a quick note. So obviously, when we were going through that work in 2019, especially the Affordable Housing Committee has been doing a lot of work since that time to continue to move things forward. So some of the actions that were being proposed back in 2019 were kind of set as priorities through the work plan of the Affordable Housing Committee or the Planning Commission. And so some of the work that's been completed here is the adoption of the construction excise tax. Affordable housing is exempt from transportation and wastewater SDC fees. Affordable housing projects receive a reduced permitting fee for review fees by 50%. We expanded the allowance of different housing types, and then also reduced parking requirements for affordable housing projects. So those are some of the things that we were looking at to reduce some of those barriers that we've actually implemented and completed. So just wanted to make note of some of that good work that's been going on through the past few years. Then moving into the proposed 16 actions. So we broke them into five different categories to try to make it a little bit easier to organize. So there's four actions that are, what are the long-range planning actions, three regulatory amendments, three incentives for new housing. incentives for new housing, two land-based programs, and four actions relating to housing choice and preservation. And so these should look really familiar to all of you based on that last work session. And then what implementation kind of looks like as far as ongoing coordination with the standing city bodies that we have. So the Affordable Housing Committee will primarily help us provide recommendations on partnerships, programs, and initiatives. I think they also do a really good job of considering housing adjacent outcomes, so things like social services or healthcare issues. The planning commission will continue to help staff provide recommendations on land use and zoning regulations, code amendments, and staying involved in those long-range planning efforts. And then city council will be taking final action on the recommendations provided by both of those committees with additional consideration on policy and budget considerations. And then for the implementation, obviously, all these actions are being proposed because we know that they're important. But we, we have eight years to implement them for a reason. And so exhibit 11 in the HPS is the implementation schedule, which you'll see on your screen. So trying to set those up in a way that feels manageable and also strategic. So there's certain actions that logically kind of make sense sequentially, after, a different one that kind of built on each other, and ones that, you know, may take less time than others, and ones that we kind of went through prioritizing with all of you and the Affordable Housing Committee to try to identify which ones to get on sooner in that work plan, and which ones to focus on a little bit later. So we're trying to take a measured approach to this work over our work plan. And again, we'll have that midpoint check-in to evaluate how we're doing and see if there's some adjustments that we need to make. So the adoption process steps, the public hearing was held on May 15 with the planning commission, and they provided a recommendation to adopt the HPS as presented. And then the city council tonight has three options. So they can approve the resolution number 2025-18, could request more information, or could not approve the, the resolution. Staff's recommended motion would be a motion to approve resolution 2025-18, adopting the 2025 City of McMinnville Housing Production Strategy as presented. And then that's all I have for the presentation. If you have any other questions, we'll try to work through those with you.
Thank you, Evan. Do I have any, councils have any questions? Doesn't look like we have any. So based on that, do I have a motion to consider resolution 2025-18?
So moved.
It's a motion from Counsel Peralta?
Second.
Second from Counsel Cunningham. Any further discussion?
Counsel Cunningham?
Aye.
Counselor Tokolski?
Aye.
Counselor Chenoweth?
Aye.
Counselor Payne?
Aye.
Counsel Gary?
Aye.
Counsel President Peralta?
Yes.
Resolution 2025-18 passed unanimously by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you, Evan.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we're going to move on to consider resolution number 2025-21, a resolution adopting a planning and engineering fee schedule and repealing all previous resolutions adopting, planning, and engineering fee schedules at the time this fee schedule becomes effective. And a call on Heather Richards, Community Development Director, and James Lockton, City Engineer, to present.
So I don't have anything addition to present that we talked about at the public hearing, other than I was remiss and was just reminded of this, that the fee schedule also has in a clause of 50% reduction of permitting fees, both in engineering and planning for qualifying affordable housing projects.
Can I, so the fees, is there any, any clause in there to automatically raise those, or will it always come back in front of the council?
The, the annual update?
Mm-hmm. Will it always come to the council, or?
It will always, so if I'm understanding your question correctly, let me, let me, let me state what I think I heard. It won't update without coming back to the city council.
Perfect.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none. Does a council have a motion? Motion could be to consider resolution, accepting resolution number 2025-20?
I move to accept resolution 2025-21.
Counsel Payne?
Second.
Second from Counsel Gary. Any further discussion? Claudia?
Counsel Cunningham?
Aye.
Counsel Tokolski?
Aye.
Counsel Chenoweth?
Aye.
Counsel Payne?
Aye.
Counsel Gary?
Aye.
Counsel President Peralta?
Yes.
Resolution number 2025-21 passed unanimously by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you. Next, we consider the first reading with a possible second reading of ordinance 5162. Does any council need to declare an actual or potential conflict of interest, recuse themselves regarding this ordinance?
Mayor?
Yes?
Out of abundance of caution, I will once again recuse myself.
Thank you. Counsel Cunningham?
And once again, I have a potential conflict, being a business owner, but I have no stake in the actual building ownership.
Great. Thank you so much. We will now consider the matter of ordinance number 5162. Does any council object to having the ordinance read by title only? Seeing no objections, I refer to City Manager David Lightenberg to please read the ordinance by title only.
This is the first reading of ordinance number 5162, an ordinance extending the duration of the McMinnville Downtown Economic Improvement Assessment District.
Thank you. I'll now call on Finance Director Katie Henry, if she's still there, to present.
I am still here, Mayor.
Hello.
I do not have anything to add beyond what we discussed for the, the public hearing. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, we can move forward.
Any questions for Director Henry? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to accept the first reading of ordinance number 5162 and possibly pass to a second reading?
So moved.
Second.
So I have a motion from Counsel Gary and a second from Counsel Payne. Any further discussion? Claudia?
Counsel Cunningham?
Aye.
Counsel Tokolski?
Aye.
Counsel Payne?
Aye.
Counsel Gary?
Aye.
Counsel President Peralta?
Aye.
The motion has passed unanimously by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you. So the ordinance number 5162 passes on its first reading unanimously. I will now ask the city attorney, David Lightenberg, to read the ordinance again by title only.
This is the second reading of ordinance number 5162, an ordinance extending the duration of the McMinnville Downtown Economic Improvement Assessment District.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance 5162?
So moved.
Counsel Cunningham?
Second.
Second from Counsel Gary. Any other discussion? Claudia?
Counsel Cunningham?
Aye.
Counsel Tokolski?
Aye.
Counsel Payne?
Aye.
Counsel Gary?
Aye.
Counsel President Peralta?
Yes.
Ordinance number 5162 is adopted by a vote of five to zero.
Okay, I will now adjourn the city council meeting at 8:43.